Fox. There you are. Hello. I see you now.
There.
Okay.
Um, so Ashley, how, how do we handle this since we need to do the, uh, election of officers, uh, this evening? Do we want to do that first?
Um.
On the agenda?
Sure, that'd be fine. We have to call it a order, but we can do that, um, ahead of the. It, well, I can do the roll call and then we can do that before, you know, pledge allegiance and everything. If you'd like.
Sure. Um. Well, then I guess, um, I, I call this, uh, this meeting, um, to order today. January, the twenty first, twenty twenty one, the Red Bank Planning Commission. Um. And, uh, I'll call roll. So, uh, Secretary Cannon is here. Uh, Commissioner Browder.
Uh, here.
Uh, Commissioner Luther.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
And Commissioner Skronberg.
Here.
All right. Um. Do, uh, Ashley, do you wanna? Do you wanna take it from here?
Sure, we can do the election of officers. Um, before I go into that, I have to make the announcement that we are holding this meeting virtually, um, in compliance with the governor's order, executive order number seventy one, and this meeting is being recorded. Um, we, all votes will ha- this evening will have to be roll call votes, um, just for, to preserve the, um, preser- preserve that for the record. So, um, I can do the roll call vote, um, since you all have a vote once we get to that point. So, that being said, I am opening the floor to nominations for the chairman of the planning commission.
Um, I, I nominate, uh, Becky Browder.
Uh, I would second that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will take a roll call vote for, um, to elect, uh, Commissioner Browder as the chair of the planning commission. So, Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
All right. Um, I will next open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
I make a nomination that, uh, that Sonia, Commissioner Miller, serve as vice chair.
Is there a second?
A second, but.
All right. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote for the vice chair to elect, um, so Commissioner Miller as, um, vice chair. So, Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Yeah.
Um, and the last position is secretary. Do I have any nominations for the secretary position?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Commissioner Cannon to continue as, uh, the secretary. He's done a great job for us and is very experienced in that. So I would like to nominate him to continue in that role.
Is there?
A second.
Okay, great. Um, are there any further nominations? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
All right. Um, well, that takes care of, um, the election. So I'll turn it back over to our, um, new chair, Commissioner Chairman Browder, or guest chairwoman Browder.
How, however you wanna say it, it's very, it's fine.
I usually just say chair.
Yeah, that's fine. Becky is really fine. So, I, I thank you all for that, uh, confidence you've placed in me and, uh, I hope I can do as well as Mr. Halfley has done. And I, I know that's dreaming because he was really a great commissioner and chair. So, it'll be hard to live up to his legacy, but we'll all try, okay? Um, okay. The, uh, the next on the agenda is the invocation in the pledge of allegiance. Not sure how we'll do the pledge of allegiance since I don't know if we have a flag anywhere close. We might have to skip that. Um, but do we have anyone who would offer the invocation? Oh, a flag.
There we go.
Oh, that's great. Would anyone like to offer the, uh, invocation? We have the vice chair. I don't wanna put Sonia on the spot, but is that something you're comfortable with, Sonia?
Sure, or, you know, I didn't know if we would do a moment of silence. Uh, it's up to y'all.
That's, that's fine with me. However you guys wanna proceed, I'm good with that.
How, how do you, uh, the, I, I don't mind if you want me to do it.
I don't, I'm fine with an invocation like we've always done if, if you're comfortable with that.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Mound prayer. Our dear heavenly father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come together as commissioners. Please give us the knowledge and courage to make the right decisions that you have asked upon us tonight. We ask this in your father's name. Amen.
Okay, thank you. Um, can everyone see the flag?
Yes.
If you would, face the flag and, um, put your hand over your heart. So, um, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
Public, which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. For all.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's, it's a har- hard to do this over Zoom, but I'm, I'm glad we're, we've got the flag, um, picture there. Okay, um, the next thing is the consideration of the minutes from the, uh, November nineteenth meeting. We reviewed those at the work meeting and I don't recall that anyone had any comments. So, um, if there are no changes or corrections, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, I guess, Ashley, do you need to call the roll on the minutes as well?
Yes, um.
Okay.
Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, the, uh, minutes have been approved from the November nineteenth meeting and, um, we did not have a December meeting. So that November nineteenth was our last, uh, planning commission meeting of last year. Okay, if we look to the new business, we've already done the election of officers. Um, the first thing on our agenda is the revised plat for Free- Freeman Family Subdivision lots three and four. We did talk about that at our work meeting. Um, Ashley, I, I think you were gonna do a little bit more research on that, but if you wanna bring everybody up to date on, uh, on what this, uh, request is.
Sure. This plat was submitted to add another lot around along Coker Circle. Edit, adding an additional lot would result in space for only a narrow shotgun style home due to side setback required of when abutting an R one zone property. The cap applicant has since clarified that he would like the lot to be held in reserve for future development and should the neighboring property be rezoned in the future. I have consultant further, further with the city manager and he has let me know that significant stormwater improvements will be needed in the area to support an additional home. My recommendation is to table the plat at the request of the applicant who I spoke with today. I recommend that the applicant resubmit a plat listing Lot Four as a community lot with deed restrictions, which he could then hold, um, you know, remain the owner of as, as the developer. He could be the owner of that lot, but the neighboring property owners would have access to it as community space, um, until it would be, it would then have to be replatted in the future to allow additional development of that property and it would at that time go back to the planning commission. Um, as of today, he has not submitted that new, um, revised plat, so it would have to be resubmitted for a future meeting. But the tabling of the plat was at the, um, at the request of the applicant. So, because of that, we can table it, um, to allow additional time. There is a sixty day time limit on plaques, which is why I'm, um, emphasizing that.
So, uh, Ashley, then it would be, um, uh, to a time certain. In other words, would be tabled for up to sixty days? Is that what you mean or?
Um, it would be tabled until the plat was, um, until the applicant requested that it be on the agenda again. Um, you have the option of denying it today as well. It has almost the same effect since it's at the applicant's request.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that or can you just pull that from the agenda?
Um, you'll need to have a motion to table it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to tape, to table this plat until such time as the applicant comes back with a revised drawing?
I make a motion to table it.
A second.
Okay, we do have a motion and second. Any discussion? Ashley, would you please call the roll again?
Sure. Commissioner Browder?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Okay, the, the motion does, uh, is approved. Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is the request to rezone eight Gaylord Street from R one A to R three. Uh, we did have an extensive discussion about this at our, uh, work meeting. Um, and I don't know how many, uh, people are here to make comments, but what we'll do first is have Ashley give us an overview of what this request is. And then if the applicant is here, we'll hear from him and then, uh, we can open it up for, uh, comments from citizens. But if you did make extensive comments at our work meeting, perhaps you can just say that you've already done that. So you don't have to repeat it all. Uh, all of the commissioners were here at the work meeting and heard from the, uh, couple of the residents. So Ashley, you want to, um, give us an update on that?
Sure. The applicant has requested to resume the property at eight Gaylord Street from R one A to R three. I did verify that this property had been rezoned from R one to R one A in twenty fifteen. The existing duplex is illegal nonconforming use, meaning that it's legal to be used as a duplex, um, now because it had been grandfathered in essentially with the zoning changes. But a new duplex could not be built at, on this site, um, at, with the current zoning. The applicant's intent is to use half of the property as a short term rental unit and the other as a long term rental unit. Short term rental units are permitted in the R three, R four, R five ending commercial zones in Red Bank, um, with some very strict restrictions and licensing requirements. Only one short term rental unit is permitted per structure. If this property is to be rezoned, I recommend strict conditions that will revert the zoning to R one A should the property owner's license be revoked. Um, it would, I recommend it being reverting to R one A immediately or should it lapse, um, for more than ninety days. This condition would limit any future development of the property, not allowing other R three uses such as apartments. I recommend that the planning commission consider whether this prop- this property could operate safely as a short term rental and without harm to the neighboring property owners. Um, if that's the case, it could be rezoned without being spot zoning. But I have heard several, um, comments from, um, neighboring property owners with their concerns regarding safety. So I have some comments that I can read during the public comment period as well. Um, and so that is my recommendation. Um, and I guess we can turn it back to you, Commissioner or Chairman Browder.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. Um, I think our next, uh, the process would be for the applicant, um, to give us a short explanation of what he plans to do. And then we, we would ask that, that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Um, we, like I said, at the work meeting was a two hour meeting and we had, everyone spoke relative to all of our agenda items. And you see, we have, uh, several more, uh, to get to. So if, if you would keep your comments short, if you, uh, talked at the other meeting, you simply can say that you did and you can rea- reiterate a couple of your points. But if you would try to limit your comments to, um, to three minutes or less. Um, is the applicant on the line?
Yep, I'm here.
All right. If, if you would, uh, applicant and also anybody making a comment relative to any of our, uh, rezoning cases, if you would state your name and your address before you make your comments, um, for the record.
Sure. Uh, I'm Joel Farbman. Um, my wife and I own eight Gaylord Drive and, um, thank you guys for your time. So I'll just, real quick, I won't go through everything I said last time, uh, cause like you said, you're all there. Um, we bought the house a little over a year ago. Um, we did not know that anything, that there was anything not out of compliance until we spoke with Eddie Clinton, who sent us a letter. Um, talked with him. Um, we've had very, we've had great relationships with our neighbors. I believe Monica's on here. Um, and she is the one who sees everyone because she's right across the street. Um, we've always had, we have very high bar for peo- people that we allow to stay. Um, and so we've never had issues. Um, I will, one thing that she brought up, safety, one question, she said it wasn't necessarily a a set question, but something that she's thought about in the back of her mind. Um, one thing to keep in mind, obviously, all the neighbors can't have, you know, power to see who's staying and who's not and approve people. Obviously, as the homeowners, we do that. Um, but we have a very high bar that we, uh, don't, we actually don't allow a lot of people to stay. Um, and one thing to keep in mind, if it makes, uh, to her point, um, the, everyone who stays has to have their address, their name, their phone number, their home address and all that is verified. We have all that. And then also their license and all their like personal information is through Airbnb. So it's not like she, one of the points was like, what if an abduction happens? Like, we know exactly who it is, all of their information, like, it's very, 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 like, it's, you, you're, someone could be abducted from the grocery store a lot easier and you'd have no way to, to track them down. Whereas like through Airbnb, that's not at all the case. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, uh, I talked about how a lot of people have been wanting to move to Red Bank after coming and staying in our house. Talked about how my wife, like, this is her ma- this is her main income. Um, and this is, she cleans, we're there all the time. So we have a lot bigger of a presence. Um, I did not realize until I spoke with Ashley, her and I were emailing today, actually. I didn't even realize that it was a one, that we could only apply for one side. Um, so we've kinda changed our plans. Um, if we can get this rezoned, we would do long term rental on one side and we would do short term on the other side. We didn't even know that was a thing. So I think there was some confusion saying that we were only applying for one. I didn't know that there was a difference. I didn't know that we couldn't, that we weren't applying for both. Um, so Ashley did explain that today and we're totally fine with that. I think she recommended a number of things that made it very strict as far as that, that if the zoning changed, it would not change. Like if we were to sell the property or something like that, we couldn't just build something else. Like she just said, we can't just build another duplex or really change anything. We've already done all the improvements to the home um, and brought up the value of it and the area. And so that's not at all what we're looking to do. We're just looking to do short term vacation rental on one side. Um, I also did some math and, um, the four percent hotel motel tax would be about sixteen hundred to two thousand dollars that, that the city of Red Bank would, would receive a year, um, from just one side, not even both sides, from one side, which is not a small amount of money, um, that, that wouldn't be coming to the city at all, um, if there was, if there was, if it was just long term. So that's, I mean, overall, I think that the, um, the recommendations that Ashley made are very strict and we are very strict. And those recommendations are only towards us. And as far as like in this particular instance, it's not like a general thing, like all Airbnb and the whole city. That's not what this is about. This is a, a one time instance for one side of one duplex that was purchased under that assumption. I know we talked about Realtors and all that stuff and, uh, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty, which is, you know, obviously, we didn't know that. But, um, so anyway, yeah, I, doing that math, I was very shocked to see how much, um, monetary the city would be losing out on, on that as well. And that's, that's also my wife's main income and so i- it's, it's very, very, very personal and close to our hearts and it, you know, it's a big deal for us. So, um, we are hoping that, uh, you guys can understand and, and think that through. And, um, and like Monica has said to any other neighbors that I haven't met yet, I would be happy to give my phone number to everyone. My wife and I live a couple of minutes away. It's not like we're far away. Um, and if there were any issues, which there haven't been, um, but if there were any issues, we, like, that is very important to us that, like, our guests are not more important than our neighbors, like our neighbors and the safety of the area is very important, which is why we go above and beyond with everyone that ever stays. Um, and that's, you know, very important to us. So like Monica said, she has our number. She knows that we would take care of anything that, as she has, uh, if she's had any issues, which she hasn't, but she knows that she can always get ahold of us and we're very, uh, accessible. And that's the case for any other neighbors that we haven't met. I'd love to, to meet you guys and, uh, um, give my phone number and my wife's phone number and all that. So.
Okay, tha- thank you for that. Uh, before we move to any comments from the neighbors, um, do any of the, uh, planning commission members have any questions for, uh, the applicant?
I, I do have a question. I'm sorry, Sonia. Um, I just wondered, did you, you may have said this and I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you say that you are a resident of Red Bank?
Uh, we live right outside, like a couple of minutes.
Okay, so your primary residence is not in Red Bank, correct?
Correct. Correct. We're about five minutes from that house. So we're right on the border.
Okay, I just, other commissioners?
Um, how, how much does it rent for a night? And is there a minimum of nights that they have to stay?
There's not a minimum because my wife is the main cleaner. So when it's, if it's just one night, then she's there e- every single day. Um, and the minimum, uh, let me do some math. So the minimum a night is eighty dollars and that's on weeknights and weekends, and that's plus fees and taxes. Um, and weeknights are typically, like one seventy, one eighty? And, yeah, so it's not, I, apparently, like Monica said, the last time, like, there was someone like twenty or forty dollars and that, like, and that's why there was a lot of riffraff. That's what that's gonna bring. And that is not at all what we have ever allowed, nor would we ever allow. Um, that's not at all what we're looking to do. My wife is the one who cleans and if there's anyone who even leaves dishes or something or doesn't follow the rules as far as that she gets very upset, it's like that's, obviously doesn't affect the neighborhood. But it's like, you know, we have very strict rules. We have very strict checkout procedures and all that. So.
Thank you.
I, I had one question. Um, I know we talked about this, but you've been operating this for about a year. Is that correct? Is that what you said you bought?
We bought it a little over a year ago. We weren't able to operate it first. We had to do a lot of renovations and things.
And, and you just put it on the Airbnb without checking to see what the.
Well, we were under the impression because it was a multi-family, um, home that we were allowed to do it. We didn't know any different until, uh, Mr. Clinton got in contact with us.
Okay.
So that's why we've, you know, he, and that's what he told us was, oh, what you have to do is you have to apply. And in order to do that, you have to change your zoning first and then you apply.
Right.
Um, so I think a lot of the neighbors have thought that, oh, we're trying to like build some huge building, which obviously what Ashley had said, that's not even an option. That's not what she's recommending. It would be very changing the zoning is solely just to be able to ha- be able to then get the license and start paying the taxes and, and do it be in, in compliance. Cause we didn't even know we were out of compliance.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner, uh, Luther, I think had a question.
What's the percentage of, of days roughly, um, that it's occupied versus when it's vacant?
Uh, it's a very high percentage.
That it's occupied?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I have.
And a lot of times, what, sometimes we'll have people who stay for two weeks or something. Um, yeah, that's, that can be very common. They, it could be one day, but it can also be three weeks. I mean, we, uh, you know, even during the pandemic, we had people there for a couple of months. So it wasn't, you know, that's not unheard of.
And I have another question for Ashley. Um, so I was looking, this is for a request to rezone eight Gaylord, um, street. But if a new zoning does apply, it will apply to our plot eight and ten. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, zoning goes with the lot, um, unless there's a very unusual circumstance. So it would go for the whole lot. You'd still only be allowed to put one.
Yeah, and that's what she explained to me today.
But.
It said it would only be one side of the duplex would be able to be short term. And I, um, when I bought it, it was bought under eight, but it included eight and ten. So that's, yeah, that's probably what's under that.
Okay, other questions from the commissioners before we hear from the, um, anyone who is in opposition or wants to make a comment about this, uh, proposed rezoning?
Um, I, I just wanna just make a, a statement. I'm just thinking back when we put together the, the language for the short term rentals and, um, and, and my recollection is we were pretty, uh, at, at the time, we were pretty specific in, you know, where we did and did not, uh, believe that short term rentals were best and, you know, and in keeping with the long range plan, um, and all that we put together. And, um, I think that's, you know, basically that's why we, um, uh, we structured it that way, um, on the short term rentals. So this would be uh, opposite of that, in, in my opinion. But, um, but that's just, that's, that's where I'm at.
Well, I've, I feel like this, changing this to R three is a spot zoning. And I know that's something that we don't want to do. And that's, that's a big concern of mine is the, the R, the R three would be what I would consider spot zoning. Uh, other questions from commissioners at this point? Okay, um, Ashley, I'm not sure who all's on here for, uh, that would like to make a statement. Can you help me there? Just determine that?
Sure.
I, I see, I see, um, Ms. Brogan, um, but I don't know who else is on. I, it doesn't show me everyone.
Sure, I, I have, um, right now I have Monica. Um, I have Ms. Brogan and I have Mr. Steven. Um, so if anybody else would like to speak on this, if you could use the chat function, um, if you have access to it, um, and let me know and I'll put you, um, sort of in the order. And if anybody um, does not have access to it, um, just, I mean, feel free to, I guess, unmute your mic and speak up, um, in between, um, folks, if you could avoid interrupting anyone. But, um, I know if you are on a phone, you might not have access to the chat function, but.
There might be a raise your hand option that may work on your phone easier than chat.
Okay. Yeah, that would work as well. I'll, um, keep an eye on that as well. But, um, I, I guess I'll let Ms. Susan, um, Bro- Brogan and her counterpart there, that's with her, um, start off.
Okay, Brogan, if you would give your name and address and then again, keep comments to less than three minutes if you don't mind.
All right, yes. Uh, Susan Brogan, twenty Gaylord. I did talk extensively at the other meeting, so I'm just gonna go over a couple of things.
All right.
I realized that Mr. Farber has, is doing a very good job of vetting the people he rents to, but he can't vet the people that they bring with them or the people that they invite over. So that, that's kind of a problem. And, um, talking about the money that comes in, you know, we, we. And talking about the money that comes in, you know, we we get more money from permanent residents than from transients that are just coming in, you know, for a few days or a few weeks at a time. This is my neighbor. She lives at, I'll let her tell you. She is.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Mahan. I'm at three Gaylord. I'm diagonally across the street from the duplex. And I've been here since 1994. And I've I've seen a lot of, a lot of things come and go with that duplex. And I just feel like that it would be putting us putting us in a, in a bad situation on this street. If it's just people coming and going that we don't know. And I know he's, sounds like he's doing a good job right now, but that's not to say anything, you know, for in the future of how long or what kind of renters he's got. I mean, it's just, it's just an unknown situation that we've just been here so long that it's it's a lot of traffic that's not needed on this small street. And and the parking issues and I'm just, I'm very adamantly opposed to it at this time.
Okay, thank you. We have others?
Yeah, I'm Chloe Rogan. I live at 20 Gaylord Street. A couple of issues I have is the letter we received said the intent of the applicant is to use one unit of the owner-occupied duplex as a short-term rental. And now he's saying that he will not be living there, so it's not going to be an owner-occupied duplex. That's of concern to me. It's also the tax situation, it is a lot of money, but you know, residents that live here, they're going to grocery stores every week. They're going to the local shops. I think the sales tax would even out or even be greater than that. And then also, he says this is a one-time situation, but this is a public notice. I mean, any other homeowner can look at this situation specifically pointed out, say, you did this for him. Why can't you do it for us? And I think that sets you up for even more short-term rentals, because how can you say no? It's another one if this is, if you've done it for this one.
And spot zoning.
The issue with spot zoning with it. And also just, it concerns me population-wise. We have so many short-term rentals, you know. What school funding do we get when we don't have any? When there's there's less kids going to the school and that's based on attendance-based or government funding sometimes is based on population. This takes away from it. And in a small town like Red Bank, you need everyone to count that you can. So I just want to bring that up and say that I am also against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Ashley?
Steven Olstead is on and has asked to speak.
Okay.
Hey, how you doing today? Thank you. I'm back and forth on it. I was, I did have a concern that it said that it was supposed to be for owner occupants as well as a rental next door. And that would normally keep keep people at bay if they've got the owner next door from having rowdy parties and whatnot. And there've been a couple of parties there that have gone until o dark 30 in the morning. But I'm not a Karen, so I don't really care. I care about, you know, just living my life and let people live theirs. And you know, that's just how I am. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a 3316 Martin Road. I forgot to give you that. Yeah, I can see it from the side of my property. I'm one yard away adjacent. So I hear it all and see it all. And I haven't had any real problems with it. If they have a renter in there who's a steady renter, they're basically be like an owner occupied who's going to be irritated if people are getting noisy and they will probably end up keeping them quiet. But if I have a phone number that I can call for him to come over or his wife to come over if they're getting rowdy, because I'm not going to waste the police time. They've got other things to do. Then I'd be fine with it. Because of the idea that it's a, it's a transient sort of rental thing, you know, renters come and go. And I can't control if I've got a neighbor next to me who's there long-term that is absolutely out of control. There's nothing I can do about it. The good news is if you get a rough one, they're gone in one night or two nights. So those are my thoughts, back and forth. I'm not opposed to it. I'm not, you know, I don't care either way. But those those are my concerns and thoughts on it. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just clarify real quick, just so you guys know, I didn't put owner occupant. That's, that might have been assumed by someone in the Red Bank filing. I never put that on my thing, so I don't want anyone to think that we lied or like, because that, I never said that it was owner occupant and then we're going to rent out the other side. We asked for the whole thing. I didn't know until today that it wasn't even allowed to be both sides. So just to clear that up. And as far as the tax money, the the sales tax that comes in, that comes from, like, when people come in and stay, they always go grocery shopping. And I always recommend the food city that's right there, which is in Red Bank, which means Red Bank's getting that money. And those people go food shopping a lot more often than someone who lives there. The tax money that I was talking about to up to 2,000 a year, that's on top and that's hotel motel tax. And that would, the city of Red Bank would not even see any of that if there was a long-term renter. So that's on top of the sales taxes. It's not instead of or anything else. But just sorry to interrupt.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Ashley, do we have anyone else on that wants to comment? I don't see.
I have a letter from Monica James, and I believe she's on the line. If she would either like me to read her letter or if she wanted to. If she wanted.
I'm on the line.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you if you'd like me to read it or if you'd like to speak.
I don't mind to speak. I'm kind of in an alcove. I just didn't know if it was really echo. I'm at work at the moment, actually. So can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, you're fine. Yes, you're fine.
I did speak extensively the last time. We're 3324 Martin Road. We've lived there 20-plus years. So we're, I guess, the priority of the most, the other neighbors that tend to be affected the most. And we're sort of kind of on the fence, too. We don't really lean one way or the other because we've lived there as many years. I'm kind of with Steven on the whole. You can have a long term and it can be riffraff and you can have a short term and it can also be riffraff. And I will say Joel and his wife are entrepreneurs for the 20th century. So I understand trying to supplement income in the most creative way you can. But I also understand the laws of all the R3 and then also just the spot zoning. There are multiple duplexes that reside in Red Bank. So commissioners, what are you setting yourself up for in the future with that on the back burner in your mind? But Joel, I just wanted to point out, I do think you guys do an exceptional job. But again, with what Susan was saying, sometimes because it is a two-bedroom duplex on each side, the one person that's making the booking on the backside of the computer, you have access to all of their information. But all of the guests, not so much. And we have to live there regardless, so we've taken it with a grain of salt. We tend to stay to ourselves and make do with what it is. But as a residential, you do things because you live there for a long time. When you're on vacation, you tend to do things because you're on vacation. So most of the time, people are coming in and they're on vacation or they're, you know, on a trip or whatever. There are some things that can't be avoided, that it's not something that we could pick up at the phone and call you about. And I'll just point out, for instance, sometimes people are saying goodbye. They're talking to their friends that are in the adjacent one. We had somebody that walked over into our yard and spit out their morning toothpaste while they were brushing their teeth. It's small things like that. I did have one man, he, he was being generous, but he startled me. I was getting my 18-month-old out of the car and he came up and he opened my car door behind me. And he's like, do you need some help, ma'am? And he was super, I don't really know the right word for it, but it just made a, a, a single, you know, a mom and a child. I felt very vulnerable at that moment and I didn't know what he was going to do. And the the whole unit had multiple men in it and I was home alone by myself. So and then there was another time, there were some young people and they intimidated Maddox, my son, my 13-year-old, just because they're looking and we're looking because we're right there in front of each other. They intimidated him pretty badly and were like, you know, what are you looking at? Huh? You know, they got very kind of harsh and violent. But again, we just went on about our business. We live there. We're not going anywhere. There are negative things, but there's been positive things, too. We've talked with a lot of the people that come in. We've shared with them about what Red Bank is and places to go. So those are just a few things aside from if things should go down. And I will agree with Steven, there are times when people are party-going, but if they're on the backside and they're not bothering us, we don't mind. So we're on the fence about it and we kind of see both sides from it with respect to both the other neighbors as a resident for 20-plus years and from Joel and his wife's standpoint. That's
I will say real quick, thank you for sharing that. And and like you said, you do have our number and all that. And so if, if anything like that were to ever happen, like people that were being intimidating or being like, what are you looking at, whatever? Let us know because that's not okay. And I also, by the way, I put my phone number in the chat in case any of the other neighbors want to contact me. But I was going to say something else. Oh, we do actually, if, 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 just so you guys know, we do ask for full names of everyone else that is staying. And we do say, like, you're not, like, if you reserve for four people, only four people are allowed on property and we need their names. So it's not, it's not just a, we don't know the other three people. We do have their full names, not just first names, full names as well. So it's not, it's, when we say we vet people, we're very, very, very careful. And if there are any issues, even intimidation or little things like that, that, I mean, that's not okay. And we, we would love to know that and, you know, because that's, we can take care of that very quickly.
We have a few other people who are on the line and we need to move on. So Ashley, I saw a couple of people in the chat that want to make a comment.
Yes, Mike C. has his hand raised.
Hey, yeah, my name is Mike Sinelli. I own a couple of long-term rentals in, in Red Bank. And I have five Airbnb short-term rentals in Chattanooga. And altogether, I own 17 units in Chattanooga and Red Bank. And the five Airbnbs I've owned for four years now. And I just wanted to, you know, I, for four years, five Airbnbs, hundreds and hundreds of guests, never had any serious problems, some small minor things here and there, never had the police call, never had loud, you know, big parties or anything like that in four years. And and with my long-term units, I've had, you know, the places trashed, you know, windows broken, stuff like that. And those people are stuck in a lease for a whole year. And you have to go through court and evictions and nonsense for months to get them out. As with opposed to short-term rentals, like somebody pointed out, they come in. If they do something that's, you know, wrong or whatever, they're gone. You leave them a bad review. Airbnb cancels their account if it's something that's bad. You know, so you have a little bit more control. And also Airbnb and short-term rentals, these companies take a sales tax and hotel motel tax and all these taxes. So you're actually getting sales tax twice. They're they're charging sales tax for the actual nightly rental. And then as they, when they're here and they're shopping, they're also paying on top of another sales tax for all their shopping needs and stuff like that. So it is bringing a lot of revenue. You know, this, you know, I don't want to, you know, put in too many comparisons, but the city of Chattanooga does have a permitting process. You can, you can do an Airbnb and and zone, an R1 zoning, as long as you go through the permitting process and you have to have a inspector come out and inspect the property and make sure it's in good condition and all that stuff. So, you know, I just wanted to put a little positive note in there that, you know, if you, if you do it right, like Joel is doing it, I feel like from what I hear him saying, then, then you you don't have problems and and it actually, you have a lot more control even of who you let in there than you would a long-term renter. So just felt like that, you know, that should be said. So thank you.
Hey, Mike, what's your, what's your address?
I'm sorry, 629 Low Water Road.
629, all right. Thank you.
Okay, Ashley, do we have anybody else? We we need to move on to get through our agenda.
Yeah, I have one, somebody who's just identified his iPhone in the in the chat saying, I have sent an email. And I I might have her email here in front of me, giving my opinion to rezone and then to the commission, and I'm against it. I don't want to open the opportunity to spot zoning for others as well. I live in another neighborhood in Red Bank close by on Christman Street. So and I have, I just have one email here. The other emails I have have all spoken. It says, Dear Commissioners, I have lived in the Red Bank community. This is from Bronwyn Powell, who I think might be the iPhone user here. Because based on her address. All 45 years of my life, I have enjoyed the quiet neighborhood community here, a place where you know your neighbors and look out for each other. This is why I oppose the proposal. If this is allowed to pass, it would be, it would set precedent for it to be allowed in our, all our neighborhoods here, including mine. I do not like the idea of short-term rentals with multiple strangers coming in and out, in and out constantly. It takes the safety and knowledge of who you, of who you are surrounded with away. I have a child and this is not making me feel safe. I hope you will consider all of the neighbors on Gaylord and surrounding neighborhoods like mine, our opinions and take our opinions into consideration while making your decision. Thanks so much for your time. So that was Bronwyn Powell, who lives on Christman nearby, but not abutting this property.
Okay, I think then that we've heard from everyone either via email or chat or I comment on the Zoom. So do we have any other questions from the commissioners at this point? Because we'll need to entertain a motion.
I I did want to just make a comment that I think that we talked about in our work session, just so everybody in this meeting knows that this definitely brought to our attention as a commission that we need to look further into the short-term rental regulation. So I definitely think that there's additional work to be done there. For me, I think, you know, listening, there's a lot of neighbor feedback and there are definitely concerns about the spot zoning and the issues that that has caused for our city. So just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, like I said, it looks like we've heard from everyone. So at this point, we need to take a vote. And I would like to be sure everyone understands. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Red Bank City Commission and they make the final decision on whether a property is rezoned or not. So do I hear a motion to rezone or to to approve or to deny the rezoning of eight Gaylord Street from R1A to R3?
I make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cannon and second by, who who seconded that?
Uh, Skonberg.
Skonberg, I'm sorry, I didn't see, you weren't on my box there. Seconded by Commissioner Skonberg. So could we have you call the roll, Ashley?
Yes.
A a yes vote is to deny.
Correct, that's, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved to deny that rezoning. And again, this is a recommendation. It will go to the, to the Red Bank City Commission. I don't know the date, but but the applicant will be notified. And I think there will also be notification to the to the surrounding properties. Is that right? Would there be another sign put up? Isn't that right?
Yes, there'll be another sign. There'll be a letter. And we'll make sure we correct the letter to say that it's not owner occupied. That was a somehow it got communicated to me from City Hall that it was, the intent was to be owner occupied. So that was a mistake on our part. I just looked at the application again and it does not indicate it on his application. So that was a mistake on our part.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And thank you all who commented. And we will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is a request to rezone 1010 Low Water Road from R1 to RTZ. Ashley, can you bring us up to date on that? We did discuss this again at our work meeting.
The property owner wishes to subdivide 1010 Low Water Road into two lots for single-family homes. The reason a rezoning is needed is because the width of the lots would have to be under 60 feet. And the 60-foot is what a frontage is what is required for the existing R1 zoning. So they are requesting RTZ. The property is under a sewer moratorium, so development could not begin on the second house until the moratorium is lifted, though they could begin on one house because they have reserved capacity. Low Water Road has seen significant redevelopment in recent years and in, especially in recent months, with several properties have been rezoned to RTZ. The RTZ zone allows for townhomes and zero-lot line, single-family homes. It is a tool in Red Bank that has been used as a type of infill development to get a little bit more density in some of these neighborhoods to have slightly closer together homes. And I feel that the proposed development is compatible with what has already been developed along Low Water and with the existing development pattern. I recommend approval with no conditions. Development of the property is already limited to two units due to the density limits of the RTZ zone, which limits it to eight units per acre. And three units were needed to develop townhouses. So these would have to be single-family homes. And we have the applicant here on the line, Ms. Murray. If she
Ms. Murray, would you like to give us a brief overview of your, of your project? I know we heard from you earlier, but if you would, go ahead and tell us again.
Pretty much the same that we discussed before. That we've got, we're gonna build, the first lot would be Lot 2. And we don't intend to raise the property. So we've got, I mean, our homes are going to be custom. And we've got two-by-six construction. There we go. Two-by-six construction and dual-pane windows, solid-core doors, custom cabs, granite counters. So it kind of just goes with the flow of the neighborhood, really. In my opinion.
I had a question.
Yes.
I had to leave before this was talked about the other day. Is this a sketch of the house that will be there that you're wanting to put on Lot 2?
It is. And I, you know, when I look at it, I kind of want to do a darker construction, but yes, absolutely.
How many square feet is this house?
This one is 20, almost 2,100, not quite.
Yeah. And what are they going to sell for?
So if we look at everything start with me. If we look at everything in the neighborhood, top selling is at 369. So that's 178 per square foot. So we'll be, actually, I think we'll be more than that just because of the quality of construction. So we've got, like I said, two-by-six as opposed to two-by-four. Dual pane windows. I mean, it's, it's, it's more of a custom home than a cookie cutter. I hate to say, you know, I hate to say it like that, but that's pretty much what it is. So
Three-bedroom, two baths?
Three-bedroom, two baths, probably three, probably four. If we can get it in there, yeah.
Questions from other commissioners? Ms. Murray, I know the one thing that you did say the other day that I think all the commissioners thought was a good thing. And that is the way that the setbacks are, you would be able to save some of the large trees in front.
Absolutely.
I personally thought that was a great plan because most of the time that is not possible. So we would applaud you for that effort.
I absolutely intend to save everything that I can on the, on the property, for sure.
Okay, do we have other questions from the commissioners?
I had one more question. Have you, do you have any other new construction that you've built in the area in Chattanooga?
Not so far, but I, I do have a property in North Shore that I'm developing. But honestly, my, my experience here is that I, I would totally like to develop in Red Bank.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
No, you guys are great. I mean, really.
That's nice to hear. We, we want Red Bank to be, you know, friendly to developers coming in and particularly in, you know, infill development like this. There has been a lot of positive development on Low Water Road, for sure.
Yes.
Well, and I want to, I want to maintain the property. I want to maintain the integrity of the lot. So if I can keep the trees and the, I mean, you know, all of that, then yeah, I definitely want to do that.
Do we have any neighbors or anyone else during this, this period of time on our agenda that you have any comments, yea or nay, on this rezoning proposal? Or Ashley, do you have anyone in the chat?
Nobody has spoken up or raised their hand.
Okay. If, if there are no other questions for the applicant, do I hear a motion from the commissioners on this request to rezone 1010 Low Water Road from R1 to RTZ?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Luther. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Commissioner Cannon. Ashley, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
The motion is approved. And again, like I said earlier, this is a recommendation to the Red Bank Commission and it will come before them at a future date. And the applicant will be notified. Okay, so we're on to our next zoning item. And it's a request to rezone 303 and 305 Hedgewood from R1 to RT, RT1. And let Ashley, if you would, bring us up to speed on this one.
Yes, the property at 303 and 305 Hedgewood Drive is currently used as a single-family detached residential unit. Cynthia Carver, the property owner, has requested that the property be rezoned to RT1 in order to build six townhomes. These parcels, but one single-family resident and multifamily developments. The proposed density would be compatible with the existing land use in the, at these multiple, multifamily developments, abutting the property. Additionally, keeping higher-density developments in close proximity to each other will further protect single-family neighborhoods as demand for housing continues to increase, which is a stated goal of the lead Red Bank Land Use Plan. The submitted plans will need to be adjusted somewhat, but they do illustrate that there's enough space on the property for the proposed development. One major change will be that townhomes must have a minimum of three connected homes. Otherwise, they will be considered a duplex. And Red Bank duplexes require both rezoning to R2 or R3 and a special exceptions permit. I recommend approval of this rezoning and I had no recommended conditions.
Ashley, could you pull up on the screen the drawing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
If I could, while we're waiting on that, I would just like to make the comment on this one that due to the, to the percentage of impervious area that's going to be post-construction, when comparing it to pre-construction, it appears that it's, you know, about 70 to 75% more impervious area that, that, you know, they really need to be detailed on their, their design for their stormwater runoff and the infrastructure there to detain all of that additional runoff that's going to come off of that, that site. So
Ashley, another question. When will the revised site plan be given to you? And this needs to be revised? And is that something that, if approved, it'd be subject to that site plan being submitted or?
So at this point, you're just doing the rezoning. I don't review site plans for single-family residential and townhomes are considered single-family residential. It's just state law that they don't go to Planning Commission. They will go to Eddie and his, the code enforcement department to make sure that they meet the code requirements, which includes the Red Bank has adopted, adopts the county's stormwater management practices. So that, that is part of the review. And, but yeah, it wouldn't come to me, the, the site plan.
And just, just let me clarify that, if I can. The county actually reviews the water quality component of stormwater. They don't, they don't review and they don't approve the water quantity designed infrastructure. So that is basically, Hamilton County looks at it pre-construction and they require them to maintain erosion controls and things like that during construction to keep the sediment and things on the site if it rains and stuff like that. But once it's, it's, it's constructed, then the volume becomes our problem if we don't have them design proper stormwater BMPs to address volumes and velocities. So.
Is it possible to add that as a condition?
Well, I think the city manager has always reviewed that stuff in the past and has always assured us that it's, it's being designed and stamped by an engineer. So if a professional engineer stamps the plans with that design, then, you know, that's, it's sufficient.
Building permit or, you know, I mean, being stamped and done by a professional engineer, right?
Well, not necessarily stormwater for, for, you know, the structure itself, foundations and, and roadways and all of that, yes. But this particular property being at the top of the hill there, it just, you know, and as steep as the slopes are, it just can really contribute a lot of additional runoff to the neighbors downstream there if they don't detain some of that additional volume and, and meter it out at a more reasonable rate during heavy rain events. So it just needs to be designed that way.
Right. Ashley, is the applicant on the, on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I am.
Would you like to make any comments? I know you were on the other day, so we heard quite a bit about your project, but if
Yes, I was. This drawing that you're seeing is just a preliminary drawing of what we would like to do in the future. The construction consultants have been in contact with Mr. Clinton and discussed some of the problems and anything that we may need to add to this later. But this will be a future development. And the properties, like I said the other day, will be sold and they will not be rental properties. But this is for future development.
Okay. Alright, thanks for that clarification. Ashley, do we have anyone who, from the public, who wants to comment relative to this rezoning?
I do not have anyone who's sent a message or raised their hand. I do want to make a quick, just a very quick comment is that the city, the Board of Commissioners has been discussing updating the stormwater fees. So I know it is on their radar to make sure that we can start covering costs a little bit better with that type of infrastructure. They're looking at hiring a consultant from MTS. It was discussed at their meeting last, earlier this week. And another little bit about the stormwater and slopes is that I did, I had sent the past commissioners, I'll send to the new commissioners, some information about the steep slope ordinances that Commissioner Karen Cannon had brought up last year. And our agenda was very full to, full this month, but next month, I think we'll have time to start discussing that, that issue further. So. But I do not have anybody But I do not have anybody. Oh, I see Holly is wanting to comment as a citizen, and she may.
That's great news.
That is good news. Yeah. Holly Elizondo, I have.
Wait, yeah, sorry, I'll change. That's my married name. I'll rename it.
Okay. That might be who it is.
Yeah, hey, everyone. I'm Mayor Barry, for anybody that doesn't know me. But I will comment as a citizen in this case. I live on Martin Road, 2910 Martin Road. So of course, I'm not that far from this area, and stormwater, you know, issues are really important to me. So I would, given what Commissioner Cannon mentioned about the amount and volume of, or the amount of impermeable surface that this development would be adding, and the volume of stormwater runoff that that would result in, that would affect neighbors down the hill, I would think that it would be prudent to make some requirements, or put some conditions on the approval of this development that would require stormwater management best practices, perhaps detached downspout, permeable pavement, driveway sways, potentially constructed sways going down the hill to catch rainwater before it runs into the neighbor's yards. And not being a stormwater expert, I'm sure there's other things that could be done as well, but just wanted to put in my two cents, and I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment so we can move, go ahead and move on with this, or?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, I'd ask if the commissioners had any additional questions before we...
Ashley, they request to zone to RT1. However, you had a recommendation based off the size that it should be R2. So what are we actually rezoning it?
I said it would be RT1 unless the applicant wanted to, if the applicant was still interested in having it as only two attached units, it would have to be an R. Well, I would recommend R2 zone. It could go up to R3, but that was just a recommendation. She has not, you know, indicated that that's the case. So it would be an RT1 rezoning unless she would like to withdraw and request R2 rezoning through a new application.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Thanks.
I just wanted to ask, when in the future were these going to be built? I just heard in the future.
There has been no specific time set right now. We do have single families, one of them is a rental property, the other one we have started a remodel on. But so there is, we'd have to demolish these two houses. There's no specific time that's been mentioned. We're just going ahead and getting the rezoning done for sometime in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners? Okay, well, we'll entertain a motion at this point. This is a request to rezone 303 and 305 Hedgewood from R1 to RT1. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, subject to stormwater infrastructure that conveys post-construction waters the same or better than pre-construction. So that's my main concern on that one.
Do we have a second?
Second, Sonia, Commissioner Miller.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with that condition that, I'll get Ashley to read that again to be sure that wording is correct from Commissioner Cannon, and then a second from Commissioner Miller. So Ashley, will you read that condition again?
Yes, it would be a motion to recommend approval of rezoning 303 and 305 Hedgewood from R1 to RT1, subject to the condition that that stormwater infrastructure be constructed such that it conveys water better or, same or better than, as pre-construction or post-construction, same or better as pre-construction.
Mr. Cannon, did that cover it for you?
Yes.
All right.
That was a lot.
It's a recorded thing.
Okay, that's true. And so, would you go ahead then, Ashley, and call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. And like I said earlier, this is a recommendation to the Red Bank Commission, and they will take this up at a future date, and the applicant will be notified. And they will make the final recommendation on the rezoning. Okay, moving to the next item on our agenda. It's a subdivision regulations amendment to the road profile drawings. And Ashley, you can go over this. We spent endless hours, and we're probably still not quite finished with the revisions to the subdivision regulations. I mean, it's been years, it seems like. I don't know how many months we spent on this. But there will be a few things that we missed and a few things that we'll, that we'll need to add to make that document user-friendly. And I think this is an example of something that will, doesn't really change anything. It just makes the document easier to use if you, you know, needed it for reference. Is that correct, Ashley?
Yes, correct. This change is simply to fix an error. I had referenced the MTS specifications manual, but then I had a developer come and ask me to find something for them, and I realized how time-consuming it is to go through that manual and find exactly what I was talking about. So this doesn't alter the requirement for curves in any way. It's simply adding it as an appendix so that it's there and easily referenced.
Do we have any questions? I think we talked about this at our work meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve this amendment?
I make a motion.
A second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Luther. Any discussion? Ashley, would you call the roll for us?
Sure. Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. To add that amendment, like I said, there'll be some additional tweaking of that document as we move forward in our next several meetings. So just be expecting a few of those things, whether it be typos or some reference number that needs to be corrected. The next item, I think it's on here because we do have some unfinished business, but if there's any new business that needs to be presented at this time. Okay, let's move then to the unfinished business. This is a request to rezone 3509 Delashment Road from R1 Residential to RTZ Residential. This was presented to us back, I think in November, maybe, at our November meeting. And the applicant decided to change what he's requesting. So Ashley, if you'd like to go over that with us?
Sure. Mr. Mike Sinelli is returning with a request to have up to three single-family residential units approved on this property. RTZ rezoning is necessary in order to have lot drainage of 45 feet on the narrowest lot. And there's a picture on your screen of the new layout. The full lot is just under one acre. Three units per acre is very similar to the density surrounding property, the exception of the home on the rear lot. It's a very large lot to the rear. It fronts on a cul-de-sac, so it's not, it's not on the same street, but is right next to it. We heard from that property owner who wished to ensure that the correct property lines are agreed upon and recorded, and that would come through the plating process and hopefully some friendly neighbor discussions. And I recommend approval of this rezoning with the condition that only single-family detached homes be built with a maximum density of three units per acre.
I know the applicant spoke earlier on another issue. Are you still on here? Is it mine?
Yes, yes, I am.
Would you like to comment on the change in your application from when we saw it before to this?
Sure. I mean, it seemed that it made more sense to the commissioners to only have three, and so I'm okay with that. And, yeah. So, did you have a question?
Do any of the commissioners have a question? I mean, I'll just make a comment. I remember this application from before. I know we were concerned a bit about the density right there in that area, and I personally like this drawing much better and think that this is much more appropriate and in character with the surrounding neighborhood and the other properties there. Commissioners, do y'all have any questions of the applicant?
I would just like to ask, are you planning on maybe using these as short-term rentals?
No, absolutely not. I know that Red Bank doesn't allow it, you know, for R3, or, I mean, below R3. So, no, I was planning on doing long-term rentals just for a short time just to offset some of the building costs initially and then sell them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Anybody?
Quick question about what's the square footage you're planning on these?
About somewhere between 1,500 and 1,800 square feet. That's pretty much the size of the Collier project down the street on Delashment, and they seem to be selling pretty well, so...
15 to 18. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant? Do we have anyone here, Ashley, that has a comment or wants to express any concern over this proposed rezoning?
I have nobody who has chimed in or raised their hand. I do have one comment that was emailed to me, and this is from Lynn Rousseau, and I believe her spouse was listed on the email as well, but I don't have his name written down. And she lives at 5304 Delashment Road, and she has states in her email, "We've finally gotten our part of Delashment there at Gab Road cleaned up, and most, if not all, of the duplex owners are living in those homes so they can monitor the other side when it's rented out. Before, before they were owner-occupied, we had thieves, murder in the very rental home on this property, and other problems." So her concern is having rental units in that neighborhood. So that was just emailed to me, and that's the only comment I have from the public.
I have one question. What would be the targeted estimated monthly rent for these? Because I mean, I'm assuming you're going to do it for a short amount of time. So I'm just kind of curious with that for the quality of tenants.
Yeah, I always go on the high side. Probably around $1,500 a month would be a fair amount. Currently, the home in the middle is a three-bedroom, one bath, and I rent it for $1,350, and I'm about to raise it to $1,500 next year. I mean, in April for the following year. So it'd be about $1,500, three-bedroom, two-bath, somewhere around there.
Okay. And you have a pretty, what's your vetting process for your tenants? Is it, I mean...
Yeah, I have them pay for the background check, credit check. They go through Cozy, if you're familiar with that. It's a, it's a property management, like they vet the, they do background check, credit check, and then I can see all that information, approve them, and then I take a first, last, and security deposit. So they have to come up with 40, you know, $4,500 upfront to even move in. So I really try to make sure that people are well-vetted and that they're going to be able to afford to stay there, because I don't want to evict people or have to go through the process.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion regarding this, request to rezone 3509 Delashment Road from R1 Residential to RTZ Residential? Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cannon, and do we have a second?
Would you like to include any conditions on that?
I would, I would like to include the, the condition that the configuration, well, I just lost it. I thought I had it written down here, that you said earlier, Ashley, about...
The maximum density of three units, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maximum density and single-family.
Correct, you're right.
Sorry, lost my place.
That's okay.
No, that's okay. I think we do need those conditions. Okay, so did everyone here, Commissioner Cannon's made a motion, the conditions regarding the maximum density and the fact that these need to be single-family homes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Skonberg. Any further discussion? Ashley, will you call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. Again, like I said earlier, these are, what we do is make recommendations to the Red Bank Commission, and this will go to them at a future date, and the applicant will be notified. And the final rezoning would be under their jurisdiction as to whether it's rezoned or not. Okay, we are to the end of our agenda. Do we have any other unfinished business, Ashley?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion with adjourn.
I'll second. Okay, all those in favor, I think we can just say aye on this one. Okay, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will convene next month, and we will hear from Ashley in plenty of time to go over our items when she sends our packages out. So again, thank you so much, and I appreciate the confidence, and I look forward to this coming year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye. Thank you.